Good evening all and welcome to the, whatever day this is, November 13th, 2017 council work session. And we, our agenda has two items, but actually the second item has two parts. So I'm just gonna, we have time for points of interest, committee reports and so on, hoping to keep that concise if possible because we want to have a really full conversation about the Parks and Recreation Master Plan update. And the subset of that is also a conversation about the subcommittee and their work on park security and funding. So aiming to do sort of at most half an hour for committee reports and items of interest and then half an hour for each of those other things. So that's sort of my timeline. And so I will open it to councillors who may have committee reports or items of interest. Anybody need to share? I bet he's gone, alright. Jennifer?
I will be quick. So I know I talked last time about Metropolitan Waste Water Management Commission and how we're working on SDC fees. So we've continued working on that. We already did the multifamily reduction like I talked about last time. But one of the challenges that we've discussed, and I thought I'd just bring it here, is that there's no legal definition for a tiny home. And we've been looking at how we might make fees specific to that category, but without having any kind of legal definition either in Springfield or Eugene or in the county, that's been a little challenging. So I thought I'd just bring that back.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Anybody else need a moment in the queue? Oh, well, this may be a very efficient meeting in that case. Great, okay. I think we will not spend any more time on that in that case. And if something occurs to someone at the end of the meeting that they really want to bring up, we'll maybe have time for that. So in that case, manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll bring up Carolyn and her team to go through a presentation that we're really looking forward to giving to you. And we're really interested in hearing all of the discussion around the council table tonight. As you know, what we will do is take all of that conversation along with the results that you will be seeing tonight, along with the committee information, along with really two years' worth of a lot of work. And after the first of the year, come back to the council with some options and some recommendations on how we move forward. So tonight, not asking for any decisions, but would really like to hear your conversation. Carolyn, I'll give it to you.
Hey, thank you. So we are here for our next update in the Parks and Recreation System Planning Process. As you know, there are two components to this work. First is the long-term vision, 30-year-plus vision of what we want to see for this community in the future. The second component is a 10-year implementation plan. So that's where we get a little bit more realistic, understand what our priorities are, and figure out how to fund them. And so it's that implementation piece that we are here to talk about tonight. So as you heard, we have, we're gonna split up this time, half and half. We have poll results from a recent poll. It was conducted during the third week in October of about 400 likely voters in Eugene. And we have our survey consultants here to discuss that tonight. And we have one who is not quite here yet. So we will, we may see him come in and we'll find room for Dave at the table. He was driving down from Portland and I'm guessing the weather may have held him up a little bit. And then, as you heard, the second topic is really to talk about the findings of the subcommittee. So we're really excited about both of these items. And we do plan on coming back in January with a set of options and a staff recommendation for how to move forward. So there's no action needed tonight, but just really interested in what you have to say. And before we dig into the poll results, I did want to just let everyone know that there will be pie served in between the work session and the meeting tonight by popular demand. We heard you. So with me here is Dee Frankforth from the Trust for Public Lands. And Dee serves as the Conservation Strategies Director for the Western United States. You'll remember she was here with us at a work session in July where we were talking about some of the different funding mechanisms that could be used here in Eugene. And then should our second consultant arrive, I will just introduce him now so you'll know who he is. It is Dave Metz, who is a principal researcher with FM3 Consulting out of Oakland, California. And they were the firm that did the actual polling work. So Dee, should I turn it over to you?
I can take it away. Thank you, Mayor Venice and council members. It's a pleasure to be back before you again this evening. Since we were here the end of July, we did work with your Parks and Recreation divisions to put together a questionnaire to help figure out what might make sense to propose for funding for the city of Eugene. As you might remember, we've been doing this work for the last 20 years across the country and for the last two years have been working with the city of Eugene. A lot of our work in Eugene has been conducted by the national polling firm Fairbank, Maslin, Maul &amp; Metz, hence FM3. And they have considerable Oregon experience, including specific park and recreation experience. And I thought it just would be a good place to show that they've had a substantial amount of work here in Oregon. Now, at this point, I would be handing the clicker over to Dave, who we've worked with for a number of years. And even prior to my work with the Trust for Public Land, I had worked with their firm. But I am pretty facile with the numbers, so we'll just proceed. And he said he was four minutes away and that was about 15 minutes ago. So I suspect he will jet in here shortly. So as Carolyn mentioned, this was held just three weeks ago of 400 likely voters who are, have the potential and propensity to engage in your primary elections. So that's what this was. And the margin of error is, and now I'm gonna get busted, 3.1%. And due to rounding, as Dave will talk about, all of the numbers don't necessarily add up to 100%.
Very well done.
It's so nice to see you.
Hello, everybody. I'm Dave Metz with FM3. Apologies, I'm running a little late making my way down from Portland. I assume we'll just continue?
Please do.
All right. So that's an overview of the methodology of the survey. Moving on, we have some questions that provide a little context for the way that voters reacted to the issues around park and recreation funding. One of the questions that we ask initially in just about all of our public policy-oriented surveys is whether people feel that things in their community are headed in the right direction or off on the wrong track. This is kind of an odd question. It breaks about three or four rules of survey design, but Gallup has been asking it since the '40s and it's a pretty good barometer of sort of people's instinctive feeling about their community. And it is overwhelmingly positive in Eugene. 62% think that the city is headed in the right direction, just 22% on the wrong track. For comparison, when we ask this question statewide in Oregon right now, it's about an even split, sort of mid-'40s positive, mid-'40s negative. So it's a good indication that people feel a lot more positively about how things are going in this community relative to their overall mood. And when we ask it nationally, it's about 15% right direction.
Am I?
Paired with that, we also had some questions that asked people about their attitudes toward local government and most particularly, the performance of the Parks and Recreation Services Department. And you'll see here overwhelmingly positive sentiment. 79% approve, just 11% disapprove, with the remainder declining to offer an opinion. What's particularly noteworthy here is the strength of that sentiment. We've got roughly 2 in 5 who tell us they strongly approve of the department's performance and that's eight times as many as tell us they strongly disapprove. And obviously, anytime you're considering going to the public and asking them to tax themselves and provide more revenue for a department to manage, this kind of confidence in the way the department is operating is an important precursor to getting that kind of approval.
What do you usually think?
For park and recreation departments usually poll pretty well. It is not uncommon that we get numbers that are in this range because frankly, it's something people enjoy. Parks and Recreation are some of the most, they're services that people welcome being able to participate in. Things like police and fire services, it's generally not your best day when you run into them, even if they're doing a good job. And with parks and recreation, people are sort of uniformly positive in their sentiments. Were there not to be good numbers here, that would be a red flag. So it's not necessarily exceptional that they're positive, but it's an important precondition to have when you're talking about raising revenue. And it's also worth noting that these impressions are formed from direct personal experience. A majority of local voters tell us that they visit parks, recreation centers, trails, or use recreation services on at least a weekly basis. And it is fewer than 1 in 10 local voters who tell us they never use them at all. And again, as D noted, these are folks who are likely primary voters. So these are pretty highly civically engaged residents. They also skew a little bit older than the general population and they are taking full advantage of the services that are provided. One other question we wanted to ask to understand where issues related to parks and recreation fit in with the broader sweep of community concerns is one where we offer the respondents a list of issues facing the community. You'll see those running down the left-hand side and then ask them to rate each one as either an extremely, very, somewhat, or not-too-serious problem. We've totaled the proportion who are in the top two categories over on the right-hand side. And you'll see there are a number of issues that are very, very high on the list. Homelessness, cost of health care, climate change, cost of housing. Those four issues are ones that majority say are at least a very serious problem in Eugene. Now, some of those are not unique to this community. Obviously, right now, the cost of health care nationally tends to be the number-one issue that people express concern with. Homelessness and the cost of housing, pretty much throughout major urban areas in the Willamette Valley, we're seeing those issues be very, very high on the list of concerns. Climate change, however, is a little bit unusual. 36% rate that an extremely serious problem, ranking it right on a par with homelessness and well ahead of just about everything else on the list. That's an issue that tends to be very polarizing along partisan and ideological lines. And obviously, this is a community that's fairly strongly progressive in terms of the voter's mindset and so you're seeing here a high level of recognition of the impact that that has. Now, as you move down the list, there's a number of issues that fewer voters right now are pointing to as significant problems in the community. Now, you'll see a number of issues relating specifically to parks are in that range with fewer than 1/3 rating them a very serious problem. Public safety in local parks, deteriorating and rundown parks, lack of parks and open space. Those are not issues that most voters are concerned with, particularly a lack of parks and open space. Only 8% perceive that to be a significant problem in the community. So it isn't like voters are seeing a crisis that needs to be addressed. At the same time, you'll see that fewer than 1/4 rate the amount they pay in local taxes as being an extremely or very serious problem. And that's also good news. It suggests that the level of anxiety around taxation is not so high as to pose a significant barrier to voters being willing to tax themselves on this issue. So all of that builds to a question we asked about the need that residents perceive for additional funding for parks, open space, community centers, and pools. We asked them to indicate if the community had a great need, some need, a little need, or no real need. Now, one of the things that concerns us in this kind of polling, when we look at questions like the last one I showed you and we see that issues affecting local parks don't register as particularly urgent community concerns, is that there may be a feeling that there isn't a need for additional resources for parks. And that's not the case here. We've got almost 2/3 of voters who believe that there is at least some need. It's not particularly strongly felt. The proportion who say there's a great need is fewer than 1 in 5, but there's still a sizable majority who are saying yes, the system could use additional resources. So all of that provides some background for the key questions we asked in the survey, which assessed voters' willingness to support two different potential finance measures: a $30 million bond measure and a $3 monthly fee. We asked all respondents about both measures simultaneously so that they had a sense that there potentially could be two measures on the ballot. And we rotated the order in which they were presented. For half the respondents, they heard about the fee first, for half, they heard about the bond first. We then went through a series of statements, the kinds of pros and cons that you might hear over the course of a community debate about ballot measures like this. And after hearing each set of arguments, we asked them again how they would vote on both measures. So here you'll see the results. First, taking a look at the bond measure. This is the draft ballot question that we tested in the poll. Now, in the course of assessing support for ballot measure campaigns, the single most important variable is the wording of the question as it appears on the ballot. It is the only piece of information that you know every single voter will receive before they cast their ballot. They may not read the ballot pamphlet, they may not look at the city's website, they may not talk to a friend or neighbor, or look at the newspaper, but this language will stare them in the face. And so its wording, more than anything else, tends to determine the success or failure of these measures. So we came up with some draft language that complies with legal standards and past precedent to describe how $30 million in bonds might be spent. And this question came very early in the survey. This was before we asked those contextual questions I just showed you that were asking people about their perceptions of parks. And here you'll see the level of support that was offered. 63% indicated they would vote yes, 30% indicated they would vote no. Very similar to the proportion that told us they thought there was at least some need for additional funding for parks. This is not a overwhelming majority and as you'll see, there's a sizable percentage of voters that are telling us they have some question or some hesitation. Fewer than half of those who indicate they would vote yes are definite in their opinion, 27%. And among the no voters, as you'll see, we've got 16%, about half of them that are definite in their opposition. That means most voters are either undecided or somewhere in those middle categories of either leaning toward yes or no, which is an indication that they'd like to get more details and information before they indicate how they would vote. Now, you'll remember, we presented both a bond and a fee measure to the respondents and we flip-flopped the order in which they were presented. Sometimes we find that when voters hear two measures, whichever one they hear second, they'll tend to be less supportive of because they start thinking to themselves, wait a minute, there's two things we're being asked to vote on here. But that really wasn't the case here. Whether it was presented first or presented second, the results were within the margin of error of one another, indicating that we've got a pretty solid reading on where voters stand on this issue. Now, you'll see here a number of demographics in terms of the sort of distribution of support for the bond measure across a variety of subgroups within the electorate. Here, the results are broken out by city council ward. And I just want to note, while there is variation, we should note that the sample sizes get to be pretty small when we're looking at individual wards. So there's a sizable margin of error, it's over 10%. So the differences between them are less significant than is the fact that there is majority support in every single ward within the city. So that's encouraging to see. Then we also tested support for a fee and we did this the same way. We tested a draft ballot question, which again, sort of fits the legal constraints of the length of language. Since it's not a bond measure, we don't have to have that extra language about the Oregon Constitution. And we tested a fee capped at $3 per month. And you'll see the support here was even higher. 74% in favor, 22% opposed, four times as many telling us they would definitely vote yes as definitely vote no. When we see this kind of reaction here comparing the bond to the fee, what that suggests to us is voters aren't always certain about the tax impact of a bond measure. It's not as transparent what it would mean for their own individual property. And so when you saw that sizable group of voters who were not fully committed that I described, one of the things they may want to know is how much is this actually gonna cost me? In contrast, the fee is very direct. They know exactly what the price point is, $3 per month. Most of them seem to be saying that that's manageable. And again, no matter what order it was presented in, whether it preceded the bond or came after the bond in the order it was presented to the respondents, we still had 3/4 in either case that were telling us they would vote yes. The support for the fee is even more uniform. When we look across the council wards, you'll see we've got at least 64% of voters in all eight of them that indicate to us they would be inclined to vote yes. Now, across these two measures, we also wanted to understand where voters' priorities lay in terms of the different ways that the money raised could be put to use. And obviously, between a bond measure and a fee, we've got the ability to finance both capital improvements and services and operations and maintenance as well. So we offered the respondents the list of different ways that money could potentially be used. We asked them to rate each one as either extremely, very, somewhat, or not important. And we totaled the percentages that labeled each either extremely or very important over on the right-hand side. Now, a couple of things to note about this. First, there are relatively few items here that we have large numbers that are rating them extremely important. And again, I think that reflects the general satisfaction that most voters have with the current condition of parks and recreation services. There are three that at least 1/4 rate as being extremely important: cleaning up homeless encampments, ensuring Eugene gets its fair share of local, state, and federal matching funds, and protecting wildlife habitat. But there is a broader range here, you'll see, that we have a majority telling us are at least very important. And that includes a range of other services, everything from maintenance to repairing and improving restrooms, repairing non-working lighting and irrigation systems, park safety, natural areas, et cetera. One theme you will notice running through these items that are highly ranked here is that most of them involve making improvements, upgrades, or maintaining existing facilities. And that dynamic is very common. Most communities where we do this kind of polling, we see that sort of fixing or improving what we already have tends to take a priority over expanding the system. Moving down the list here, you'll see we drop to 50% and below rating each of these items as extremely or very important, which means that these items have less urgency attached to them. But I would note that the proportion who dismiss them out of hand and say that they are not at all important, as reflected in the dark red bars on the right-hand side, is still very low. When we factor in those who rate these items as somewhat important, it's overwhelming majorities for every item listed, but they don't have quite the same level of intensity as some of the items on the prior slide. And you'll see this includes a number of items that would involve expanding the system in some capacity, building parks in areas of the city that currently have none, or improving and expanding hiking, biking, and walking trails. Now, if we take all of the various categories that we asked people to rate, some of which are describing similar aspects of the system but using different language to do it, it allows us to develop the word cloud you see here, which basically takes the categories that respondents were most likely to rate extremely or very important and highlights the language that stood out most in those items. And here you'll see some of the things that we highlighted on that first slide: the homeless camp cleanup, park and trail maintenance, habitat protection, and then ensuring access to matching funds. So that gives you a sense of where the public starts in terms of its support for these potential measures and then some of the uses of the money that they view as most urgent. But we also wanted to understand how fluid support might be as voters hear the things that supporters and opponents might say. So here you'll see a list of the levels of support that respondents expressed initially after hearing a series of arguments in favor and then after hearing arguments in opposition for the bond measure. And overall, support is fairly static. It starts at 63%, it rises just 2 points to 65 when voters hear the supportive arguments, and then drops back down to 63% after the opposition arguments. So although there's a large group of voters that are in that soft yes category, those light green bars, it's a pretty stable group. They aren't moving around or changing very much as they get the additional messaging. We see a similar pattern on the fee. The numbers basically stay static: 74% initially in favor, 73% after the positive messaging, and 73% at the very end. There were a series of other intervening questions, including the uses of the dollars that came after the initial ballot question, which explains why we might lose a point of support after the positive messaging as well. But overall, voters are very static, very consistent in their support for both measures. Now, we also took a look at, after we sort of presented these two initial options of the bond and the fee, at a range of other items that might be mechanisms to provide funding for park and recreation services and asked the respondents to tell us whether they would support or oppose each one. And you'll see their reactions here to these funding mechanisms. Now, I should note, in asking questions like this, it is not at all uncommon for the levels of support to be lower than what we see when we ask about a fuller package of improvements and the mechanism that would finance them, as we did with the ballot questions I just showed you. Here, we're isolating the element that voters are least enthusiastic about, what they have to pay, and sort of divorcing it from the specific things it would pay for. But nevertheless, with that limitation in mind, you'll see that the notion of a tax on sugar and artificially sweetened beverages is overwhelmingly popular. 63% in favor, 36% opposed. And look at that ratio between the strong support and the strong opposition, 40% to 25. More than the other items, it tends to polarize people. They have a strong opinion on one side or the other, but there's more on the positive side than the negative. Moving down the list, you'll see we've got plurality support for levying $2.7 million per year in property taxes for five years, establishing a separate fund to support a portion of annual operations with an initial investment provided by selling surplus parkland. Voters are basically evenly divided on that idea, 46 to 46. And then we have strong opposition to the idea of a 1% tax on the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages served by restaurants. 38% in favor, 61% opposed, and note 40% there strongly opposed, sort of the mirror image of the sweetened beverage tax. Now, regardless of how the money were raised, we also wanted to understand how voters felt about the potential cost impact it would have on them. And so we had a question designed to get at this cost sensitivity. We read the respondents' list of different price points here in additional taxes each month ranging from $20 down to $1. And you'll see we have majority opposition when the cost is over $10 per month, but we have pretty sizable majority support when we are over, when we're $10 or under. And you'll see why that $3 fee was as popular as it was. Even at $5, we've got 74% support, which is right around the same as we saw initially when we asked about that $3 per month fee. So it shows us that in terms of overall willingness to pay, we're well within the range of what voters are willing to support. So overall conclusions are, I think, very positive relative to what we're typically looking for in these types of measures. The survey data shows strong support for both measures: a $30 million bond and a $3 monthly fee. The fee tends to be, have both broader support and stronger support. And again, I suspect it's because the cost per household is so clear and so within voters' willingness to pay. And why? While we see that there is not necessarily a lot of urgency around issues relating to parks, voters are satisfied with the availability, the safety, and the condition of parks by and large, they do recognize that there is an additional need for funding. And given the modest cost entailed in the measures we tested here, they're willing to support it. The things that we see as the strongest elements of the measure include repairs and maintenance to existing facilities. No matter how we described it, that tended to score very highly, as did protecting wildlife habitat, cleaning up encampments, and then providing the city an opportunity to leverage those additional dollars and matching funds from other levels of government. So overall, I would say the survey findings are very encouraging, suggest that you are well-positioned to move forward here and have strong support from the community.
Thank you, Dave.
And we're happy to answer any questions.
So we wanted to run through that.
So we wanted to run through that quickly to be able to give you an opportunity to ask questions directly of Dave and then to be able to discuss the findings.
That sounds great. Very, very interesting, Dave. I have two counselors on my list. Anyone else want to be in the queue just yet? One, Chris. Okay. Alan, why don't you take it first?
Great work. Thank you very much. I actually really liked the results, especially since Ward 3 won. The $30 million bond, I have a suspicion that the way that it was phrased made it maybe be lower than it was. If we were to equate this to the average homeowner, what would be the similar dollar per month? Do we know that for a $30 million bond?
$31.
A year?
Yes.
So, less than $3 a month. So what would you think if you had said a $30 million bond that was less than $3 a month?
I suspect the polling probably would have been pretty similar to the fee. Again, we see broad support for the bond, but just that large group of voters who are uncertain. And my hunch, looking at the data, is that it probably comes down to figuring out what the cost impact would be for them. And if they knew where it were, I suspect the support would have been more definite.
Yeah, right. Because I don't even know what that is to ask. On the word cloud, we had ensuring matching funds. I know what that meant. Is that for low-income folks?
No, that has to do with the state funding that might be available or federal land and water conservation funding, matching funds. It's something that over the last five to 10 years, we've been testing to see if voters understand what the matching potential is. And they do, and they like it, because they know it stretches their dollars further.
Yeah, that makes sense. It's kind of free money. Interesting that the percentage stays static after you do the positive and the negative on both of these measures that you polled. Is that very usual? Does that kind of indicate that we're well-informed, that everybody in jeans like Lake Wobegon were all above average?
It is not uncommon when it comes to issues around park funding. I think when we're talking about ballot measures, if it is something that is relatively simple and clear to the voter, what's being proposed, it's not uncommon that they don't move very much with the arguments. And here, people get it. We're talking about having a bond measure or having a fee to help pay for enhanced park and recreation services. And so there's not a lot of confusion, other than perhaps on the bond, with the tax impact. And so the kinds of messages we were offering voters pro and con, I suspect were largely things that they had already factored into their thinking, and therefore didn't move them very much.
Okay. Thanks.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank all of you for such a great presentation. Appreciate that very much. Dave, on page nine, slide, page nine here, I don't know if you guys can bring that up.
This is what he's got.
You've got the leading issues of concern for the community. And I don't know if we can get to that for everybody's sake, but I'm wondering, was that an open end or provided options?
No, those were provided options. So they're rating each one.
Did you, did you guys come up with all of these options, or was there staff input on those?
It was in collaboration with staff.
As a general rule, is there, specifically with bond, is there an analysis that you would usually apply to the numbers and say there's a go-no-go point? And if so, what's that number?
Yeah. Well, I will probably defer to Dee, who, with the Trust for Public Land, has done some real analysis of how initial polling results compare with ultimate success at the ballot for a variety of different measures, hundreds of them nationally that the TPL has worked on. But I will just make the note that while there are rules of thumb, every community is different, and the initial support is only one...
More than others.
Sorry. And the initial level of support is one of only a number of factors that go into evaluating the potential for success. The intensity of support and then the reactions to the pro and con messages are also very important. And by all three of those metrics, these measures start out in very good shape. The only one that's a little shaky is the hard support for the bond. But I'll let Dee speak to the trends.
Generally, we look for a 10% cushion, because pocketbook measures tend to only go down once you poll. I've seen some exceptions to that rule, but generally 10%. So when we're seeing something, and I've tried things around 55%, and you know, you're really throwing the dice at that point. Sometimes you can make it, and sometimes you don't. We learn a lot of lessons when we don't quite make it. But so 63% even for the $3 a month fee for O&M, that is more than what we're looking for, and certainly the 75% is...
Sure, on the fee. I'm really trying to test out on the bond your experience or your usual recommendation with something like this, because I too, and in what we've heard from others in previous efforts, they often hear 60% thrown around as a kind of a go-no-go point. And the only reason I bring that up is because Ward 3, while having received such amazingly strong support for the bond, and congratulations, Alan, is predominantly students and more...
No, this was likely voters.
Let me say this differently. One can read their own assumptions into whatever they would like with their Ward-by-Ward measures, but without Ward 3, it's 60.857% based on the numbers that were up there. And so I just, I was wondering if you wanted to comment on that.
I would say this is likely voters in the May primaries. So if, it's pretty solid.
They're pretty hardcore. I mean, it undoubtedly includes some students, but it is students in that case who are highly active and regular voters. You know, as a general principle, I would say combining all the results here, the fact that we had two measures side by side that we were asking voters about throughout, given the willingness-to-pay numbers we saw at the end, that it was significantly in excess of what both the bond and the fee together would total to. And the fact that the support for both measures was so consistent before and after messaging makes this 60% feel a little bit more secure than it would be in communities where some of those other factors weren't present. The other things could be bigger red flags with a number like that.
Right. And lastly, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would also add that we structured this to replicate the potential or possibility to see if we went forward both with an O&M measure and simultaneously a bond measure, which is why asking them one first and one second, and then flipping that was important to see that that didn't change, coupled with that penultimate slide that shows $10 a month still gets over 60% support.
And thank you very much. And lastly, need versus want, it's not a huge need number, which is why your argument stuff doesn't move the dial very much, because it's a pretty average or flat need sort of number. Does that concern you with a May primary vote in terms of either turnout or a low-impact
We don't see much in the data to suggest that it's highly sensitive to turnout, because again, the people we interviewed are pretty rock-solid voters to begin with. The area that it might concern me would be if there were some other issue in the community that were at crisis level, and there were other taxes that were proposed simultaneously. Looking at the data, there doesn't seem to be an issue, at least of the ones we tested, that rises to that level. So offhand, I don't see that as a particularly discouraging context, although obviously there's time between now and the election, and were something else to emerge that had more urgency behind it that could be potential competition. But it doesn't seem evident in these numbers.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Chris?
Yeah, thank you for this report. It's extremely informative. And kind of two points that swirl around each other that are interesting to me is, especially what I'm trying to gauge support for a measure, is, for me, a lot of the solid support comes from the solid yes, the extremely people. So I always kind of zero in on that, because the soft yes, as you say, is where you lose the most support. So when I look once again at this table, and I say, okay, what are we likely to lose? Probably not a lot...
Which one did you want?
The one you were on.
Oh, sorry.
That one.
Okay.
Probably not a lot of loss within the 27%, because they feel strongly. That's a definite. But you probably would experience loss for sure in the undecided, and also within the soft yes, the light green. And so for me, I look at that and I go, could you afford to lose how much and still pass the measure? You mentioned 10%. I tend to be a little bit more conservative than that and probably go more like 15 or 20%. Could you afford to lose 15% or roughly half of the soft yes and still be in good shape on this? And I think if you were just throwing it out there without the supporting information, how much would the impact be, whatever, it definitely puts it in that kind of yellow, light, dicey area, as opposed to the fee, which totally blew me away, because you could lose half of that soft yes and still be way over 50%. So I'm thinking, wow, that's really interesting, because we had a fee on the ballot a few years ago, and it went down 2 to 1. So you say, what's the difference between what they're talking about here and what we were talking about there? And one, the subject matter, and two, the definitiveness of what the money would be used for. And I think that probably makes a significant difference in whether they would be supportive or not. So it's that, it's the passion for me that defines whether something has legitimacy. And so I look at the leading concern for voters, slide nine, and once again, I'm looking at the passion there, and I see that homelessness and climate change have passion attached to them, the dark red. But the soft degree of seriousness, under homelessness, there's a lot of softness there. But the other thing I see there is the sense that homelessness as an issue for, I think, for a lot of people, is personal. And that's my second point. Why would they support this stuff in the first place? I think their passion comes from a sense that this is a personal thing for me. I get a personal benefit, there's a personal realization, and that immediately came true way back at the very beginning when you asked people how often they interact with parks and recreation. And the extremely high number of people who interact, I think, is the source of that passion, that unlike the previous fee discussion, this is what gets you to the passion that we're looking for. So maintaining that personal aspect to it, I think we definitely have an opportunity to take advantage of here if we can just work on those arguments.
Claire?
Thank you. Well, thank you very much for this work and the report and the thorough and clear presentation. That was very, very helpful. I really like the way you've laid this out for us and walked us through it. I just had a question, and then a couple of observations. So on slide seven, oh, excuse me, slide seven, I've moved everything around. Slide 10, where you asked about the need for some additional funding, and 50% were like, yeah, there's some need, but almost 32% were like, yeah, no, not really. Then when we asked about the bond measure, those numbers are about the same. But when we asked about the fee, it seemed like some people who didn't think there was much need for funding actually were like, yeah, I'd vote for a fee. Do you have any analysis around that?
Yeah, I mean, my sense would be those folks, that 17% who are in the a little need category, when they heard $30 million bond measure, they may not have thought of that as little. I mean, it's a big number, and again, if they don't understand the tax impact, they may have sort of said, well, I don't know if we need to go that far. But when they hear $3 a month, clearly, for most voters in this community, they felt like that was a modest amount.
That was a reasonable thing that they might be asked.
That's right.
Yeah. Well, I also thought it was interesting, in the list of priority issues, that something we have talked about at this table is very important, and even named our subcommittee around it, was safety and security in the parks. And relative to other issues, that was not as high on the list as I would have expected. So that was a bit of a surprise, and makes me think, well, maybe, you know, obviously that's still important, but maybe it's not as high a priority as I was thinking voters were going to place it. I also am frankly surprised, pleased, but surprised at the high support for the $3 fee and even the higher fee. That's encouraging in terms of people's mindsets around, I think as Chris is pointing out, their love of the parks, their desire to support it, and their recognition that our parks and recreation services are really good and, you know, deserve to be supported. And then I guess my other observation is on the other potential revenues that you put out there. That was also very interesting, and you didn't do these with any pro or con messages, right? You just laid them out as options. And, you know, while a sugar-sweetened beverage tax on its face might seem very appealing, and a lot of folks would support it, that's absent the major opposition campaign that the soda industry would certainly launch if the second-largest city in Eugene decided to take that up. So those numbers would definitely shift in an actual campaign. But so I just put that out there as a caveat, that we don't get excited, too excited about that idea as the next thing we go out for. But thank you. This is excellent work, very informative, very helpful.
Any other, yes, Jennifer?
On what Claire was just talking about, about the other mechanisms, was this, did you ask them if it was in addition to the things they had already or instead of?
No, instead of what we had previously asked about. Yep.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Alan, you got a second round?
Yeah, John, when we talked to Mr. Mannross, he has a no-go threshold. That was like 60, do you remember what it was? 65?
You know, we'd have to go back and get the information come back to you. I don't want to try to represent his go-no-go formula.
Yeah, it was above 60, I think, but I don't remember it either. Yeah, it'd be good to... Yeah, Chris's point about the service fee was intriguing to me in that that went down 2 to 1. And we didn't do any polling after that, but I suspect that that's different than this in that this is for a specific purpose, parks and recs, and the fee was for general government, even though at a list of specific things that we were going to cut. And we did cut those things after it failed. Is that what, is it the specificity and the fact that they like it and use it, and it's not going to be used for general government, that accounts for the high numbers?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not familiar with, you know, what, the context of public opinion on the prior measure, but that sounds like a perfectly reasonable hypothesis to me. Voters are usually much more supportive of measures that are directed to specific services than ones that fund the general operation of government, and especially if it's something that they feel some affection for, affinity for, and use themselves. They can understand how what they would pay translates into a benefit for them.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I think that's quite correct. How would we do a fee, and what would the admin cost be? We don't currently have a fee structure unless we stick it on the E-Web bill, and therefore creating something new would be, and that has a set of issues around it, and if we did something new, then it would have a high admin cost associated with it.
Don't know what the cost of it would be. So based on these survey results, so they're sort of surprising also to some of us that the idea of a fee really polls really well. And so we will have some conversations with E-Web about what that may or may not entail with respect to their billing of this type of fee. What we'd hope is to be able to bring back some of that information as we come back after the first of the year to help inform a decision as the council moves forward.
Yeah, I'm kind of looking at this and thinking that it's not so much the fee polled really well compared to the bond, it was the way that we asked the question that really is telling to me. If we would have said $30 million bond, that was $2.58 a month versus a $3 a month fee, I mean, the $2, I'll take the lower one. That would have probably polled equally as good as the $3 one, I would suspect. It wasn't necessarily the mechanism as it was the amount.
And they could talk to it, this isn't, it wasn't a $3 fee in lieu of the bond, right? It's two mechanisms that would be going forward, right?
Yeah, together. One other point I want to make is just if you look at the ballot language for the bond measure, that last sentence is legally required, and it's a little intimidating. You know, the bonds will be payable from taxes on property or property ownership that are not subject to the limits of sections 11 and 11b, Article 11 of the Oregon Constitution. You know, who knows what that means exactly? 11 of the Oregon Constitution. You know, who knows what that means exactly, but it doesn't sound very-
That's the really fast talk on the TV.
Whereas the fee doesn't have that requirement attached to it. So the language reads much cleaner and more direct as a result.
And I think part of-
What is that section?
11.
That's measure five, right?
Stop using this method if you lose eyesight or suppression thoughts of suicide.
What I think, Alan, part of what you're saying is, is that, that the total here is like $5.60 per month, which is significantly under the $10 threshold that people generally said yes to. And I think that's part of what your point is on that.
I would also- My next point, actually.
I would also add, Counselor, that Oregon law limits the number of words. In fact, I think this is the most stringent in the nation, a 10-word title and a 20-word question. And so there are jurisdictions around the country where we actually can, on a bond, put the amount in. But when you're limited to 20 words, every word literally counts.
And the final one would be, we've talked about this on the road bonds. So we don't actually do a bond. It's more, we don't sell a traditional bond. It's more, because that's expensive, and we more or less do kind of a levy for the amount, same amount on an annual basis.
So you can talk to that probably.
Because it's cheaper, we don't have to pay as much interest. Basically, a line of credit.
Right. I think it depends on what kinds of projects we would be funding and when we needed to pay for those projects. And so depending on the types of project, the cash flow needs and that sort of thing, we would decide what the appropriate type of bond would be for these projects. So we just assumed a traditional 20-year bond when we did these numbers, but-
But there are smarter ways to do it than that.
It depends on what kind of projects you, I mean, if you need to build a couple of big projects all up front, then we would potentially need to do something different, where we would actually sell the traditional kind of bonds and pay them off over time. The thing with the street bonds is, we can structure that to match our ongoing, it's pretty much like an ongoing program, need that's the same every year. But if you're doing big projects, you might need to do that more up front with a longer-term bond. So it just depends on the types of projects. And we'd have those conversations with our advisors before we decided which way to go.
Carolyn, is this big, big project heavy, or is it a bunch of little projects? Seems like it's the latter.
Well, we haven't defined what the project list would be yet. We did earlier this year present three different scenarios. And we did, there was a $30 million scenario, which was called our fix-it scenario. So it was mostly renovation of existing parks and community centers and pools. But that isn't the definitive list, so it would definitely depend on what we prioritize.
Right. But if we ended up doing that, it would be more like the road bond where it was pretty good over time.
Or, you know, a pool or a rec facility could be a big project, so.
So just a question about that. So this was polled on the assumption of a $30 million bond, but you have presented us with several other possible scenarios. So have we, in some ways, sort of already defined which scenario we're choosing based on having done this bond, based on that particular number? No, not at all. We wanted to start at a modest bond level, because the construction of the poll was predicated around the basic question of, what's that bond amount? We chose 30. The, what's the big pie piece called? The whole pie was like a $100 million bond. And in consultation with Dave, we decided to be more modest in testing the rest of the questions against the $30 million and the $3 per month, lest it skew everything for the rest of the poll. But we wanted to also ask questions beyond that to see if there was willingness to pay more. And we found out the answer was yes.
And that's, that was the step 1510.
Yeah, Dee was spot on. I think the only thing I would add is, because we were talking about two measures simultaneously, I think that gave us another level of caution. Were you to put one measure forward, you potentially could raise the amount by more than you would if you only, if you were doing two measures together. You know, hypothetically, a $7 or $8 fee might be possible in the absence of a bond. A larger bond measure in the absence of a fee might also be possible as well. But we're trying to sort of balance the fact that we were going to be taking two bites of the apple at the same time. And so we didn't want to push too far on either one.
So that's the piece that I find hard to grok a little bit around, there are two measures, and would we be presenting those two measures simultaneously? And would there be a kind of pushback because there's two measures sort of for the same thing? Well, we don't think so. That's why we tried to have the poll replicate the actual primary ballot next May. We don't-
Right. That's the conclusion.
We didn't, I mean, ultimately, that's, that's up to you all, what you might want to refer to the ballot. But we wanted to see what was possible, and that's what we wanted to test and present.
It is kind of a pleasant surprise, actually. Yeah, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Because I didn't see the intiles of the list here, could you tell me what some of the negative push stuff was, what were some of those questions?
We tested, there's more urgent needs, like public safety, road repairs, and retaining businesses. Cost of living is already too high. We don't need this measure. We have plenty of parks, community centers, pools, and trails. Government is asking for more money for schools, roads, and parks. At much time, sometime, we must say enough is enough. Can't trust the city to spend the money appropriately. We didn't pull any punches here, I think. We tested all the things that-
Those are all good negative push. Thank you.
All right. Alan, you can have one more, and then we'll wrap it up.
Yeah, I'm in the energy business. And when we were doing the initial, 15 years ago, we were doing the initial hit on green power purchases, we would go out and poll it. And we'd ask people, would you be willing to pay $3, $5 more on your power bill to have more green power? And we'd get 60, 70 percent say yes. Then we would institute the program and say, okay, now you have the opportunity to actually do it. And we got 5 percent of the people actually did it. And that always sticks with me about the dissonance between people, what they're willing to say in a survey and what they're actually willing to do. This, of course, was different in that it was voluntary, that you had to actually take a proactive action to do it. And this would just, this would be mandatory, because it'd be a tax that everyone would pay. But can you talk to that issue a little bit about what you've seen?
Sure. I mean, my entire industry is predicated on the notion that if we ask people how they'll vote, that they will end up voting that way at the end of the day. And obviously, it hasn't been a good year for us in that regard. But I will say, when it comes to ballot measures, the record has actually been excellent in terms of the poll results being a relatively solid barometer of how people will ultimately vote. Now, it is just a snapshot at this point in time. There's a lot that can happen between now and the election. The wording of the ballot questions could vary from what's here. The sort of scope and nature of the campaigns that might emerge in the community in favor of or against a measure like this, all can have an impact. But on parks measures, as a general principle, which rarely provoke real, active, funded opposition, the polling has been a pretty reliable indicator of their success. And in fact, just this Tuesday, a week ago, there were a range of park measures on the ballot and across the country, which had an outstanding record, I think, of success this time.
Yeah, it was a total of 1.1 and 1/2 billion nationwide. And we, the seven we worked on, we won all seven of those. Yeah.
The last question, on the May ballot, there's going to be another thing on the ballot, which is the independent auditor. And I'm wondering how that plays with, if we put this on the same ballot as that, how that might play out.
We didn't test that.
Well, did you, did you test that?
No, we did not test it. We were specifically asked by the attorney, city attorney's office, not to put it on.
Oh, because that would violate our interfering with it. Well, what's your thoughts about that? You don't work for the city, so.
I mean, as a general principle, I think voters put finance and non-finance measures in sort of different mental categories. If there are multiple tax measures, depending on the tax mechanisms and where the money's going, and what level of government is asking for them, they may sort of compare and contrast them. But usually, we find if it's measures that, one's a finance measure and one's not, they tend to sort of evaluate them in a pretty independent way.
Good. Good.
Okay, I think that, thank you very, very much. Very interesting data, excellent, wonderful presentation, easy to follow. Thank you for answering all of our questions. And we're going to move on to the second piece of this conversation, which is a discussion of the work of the subcommittee. And so, Council, remember that this subcommittee was formed as a result of conversations in July, and had several objectives, to gain a better understanding of the current park and recreation funding, including safety and security, explore various mechanisms that could address the gaps, consider how to maximize the use of system development charge dollars that are currently limited by a constrained O and M budget, and consider how operations and maintenance funding can keep pace in the future with additional capital improvements. And so the committee, committee had four counselors, two residents and city staff, and have produced some results. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you for that introduction. And as you mentioned, we had four counselors on this committee, as well as two residents, Scott Sanders from the Eugene Parks Foundation, as well as Hugh Pritchard from our Parks and Recreation Advisory Group. And we basically took four working meetings to discuss what the overall challenges are to the park system right now. We did a little bit of a deep dive on what the needs are in terms of park maintenance and park safety and security. And then they looked at a number of the different funding mechanisms. So the hope was here that the council would take up this discussion, and the folks that participated would inform the rest of the council about some of the information that was discussed and shared. And we're here to answer any questions you have.
Okay, so do I have counselors in the queue who want to speak to this, or Chris? Okay, Alan, Mike? Take it away, Chris.
Yeah, I just wanted to express my appreciation for not only the staff's support on this effort, because everything we asked them for, they went out and collected. And it was a lot of information, a lot of data. Here's the notebook we worked with, and there was a lot here. But also to both Scott and Hugh for their ongoing participation as well. Having that perspective is really helpful, because we can kind of get into a loop here of our kind of policy orientation. But to have an outside voice say, yeah, but, or think about this, I think, was extremely helpful, particularly when we were talking about the different options available. And you have to remember, this committee was established not to make a recommendation, but to just analyze the information and then bring it to you, which is why it's going to take more than just, we meet tonight, we get the recommendation, we think that's great, boom, we move forward. There'll need to be time to absorb what's here. And so I appreciate that the information that's being provided is in a form that we can take the time to look at it, absorb it, think about it, and then subsequently get to a recommendation. So I would hope that today, what we can do is if there are interests that have come out of the data so far, we make sure that Carolyn and the other folks know about them, so they can make sure we get those back in January, so that we can work toward a good recommendation.
Okay, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you to Carolyn and the entire staff for all the work they did on the subcommittee, and certainly to Hugh and Scott, whose contribution was invaluable to that process as well. I found that the table that's produced with evaluatory columns on each of the potential funding options, I found particularly valuable and easy to understand the pros and cons of each of the options for moving forward. It also, I think, helps counselors who weren't a part of the subcommittee kind of see what all of us came to after, after studying this a bit, that, you know, maybe there's some creative combinations here that might work well, depending on how they're specifically targeted. I was encouraged with some of the ideas that I was hopeful I would, you know, see pan out well, have some pros and cons, but predominantly some pros there, I felt. So I'm encouraged by that. And I think that this was entirely a worthwhile effort for us to look at this more systemically, on a larger basis of what was possible. I think in combination with the information we just heard, that, I'm going to want to think about this a little bit more, obviously, before coming to any conclusions. But I'm glad we have so many options, at least still on the table as possibility. Thank you very much.
Claire?
Yeah, thank you. I concur with my two colleagues. I really appreciate the work of staff on the subcommittee and our citizen volunteers. I think it was extremely important to have you there and be part of this process. So thank you very much. I think we've got some very good information. And what I would like to suggest to my colleagues is to go back, or when we come back, to pull in the pie chart information, the, you know, the work that was done out in the community that really identified what people were looking for, hoping for, or valued. Pull that together with what we learned today from the polling data and the information that the subcommittee vetted. I think there are a lot of options. I think we can look to craft some ideas, put some ideas forward that, that I think can be responsive to what we've heard from the community, what Parks and Rec has gathered in terms of their survey data, and put that together with, you know, some foundational data we have from the polling. And I, and I do feel like we could come up with a path forward that could be successful and put us moving towards some funding mechanisms to, you know, bring our Parks and Rec system back, starting back on the right track of what we're looking for. So those are my thoughts right now. Thank you.
Other counselors want to comment on this wonderful piece of information?
I also want to, want to thank you, thank you, Hugh and Scott, staff, for doing, doing this work. It is a, it's an excellent chart, and it does help lay it all out. I found before doing this that this was a little bit of a dizzying array. And so this does clarify some of that. I think it'll be interesting, as we talk, to see what those intersections are in terms of what we've heard about polling and what people wish to see us accomplish, and how these things, I do particularly like this chart for making that connection about what is the intersection. Yeah, Hugh, did you want to say something about that?
Mainly, I came here to be thanked. But I do think, yeah, the process was really, really great from our perspective, that as the citizens thinking about it, we would ask for, we'd have a little different something. And so we'd ask staff for more. And I have about a dozen of those upgrades from Carolyn and others. And I think was really valuable to the counselors, that we asked, we saw things a little differently. So I think the process for the future of just a few citizens and a few counselors working together, to me, was a really worthwhile effort.
Great. Well, that's a good lesson. Alan?
Yeah, this is great information, but it's kind of dense. For those of you that were in, on the committee, and the two of you as well, counselors and citizens, can you give us your thoughts about how we should go about absorbing this and looking at it, and what's useful about it?
Oh, everybody wants to be in-
Scott wanted to be in the queue.
All right. So I'll, so I don't know who I got first here. I got, well, I'll let Chris go, and then-
Yeah, Alan, I can just go quickly. And it's actually in response to Alan, but it's also something else I wanted to talk about, this body of work is, as you go through it, I think we worked very hard to try to be fair and impartial in our analysis of this information. I don't sense any of us on the council that participated, or any of our other members, had an agenda or a particular option that we were trying to kind of push to the front. And we, a number of times, we talked about different options and said, how can we ensure this is presented in as straightforward a way as we can? And we rewrote some of these sections in order to try to make them more balanced and fair. So as you go through analyzing it, I think it's as good a job as we could do to try to present it in as fair a way as we, as we could. And hopefully, that will then allow you to look at it and say, compared to other options, this is what the real world looks like in terms of what we think. And there's not an agenda inherent in here somewhere. And there's not an agenda inherent in here somewhere.
Okay, Mike?
I would echo my friend's comments with one minor alteration. I think there were at least one, two, maybe three points where people said, yes, but if you present it this way, it's going to sound more unbiased, and like you're not trying to drive to a particular end. And I think there was a definite effort in the process to try and put forward balanced information that was helpful to the council and the decision-making. And to answer your question, for me, I look at this chart, like I mentioned, and I see that it lays out particular options that have, that are, that are easier or good to use in particular circumstances. And then some of those options have challenges in other ways. And so for me, I look at the ones, I mean, just with a very cursory sort of glance, I look at the one with the fewest negative, you know, challenges, and think these seem like good options. But that's not an entirely balanced view either, because there are some with challenges, but they're worth taking on and trying to do. And I will, just to be, again, fair, say that Chris was accurate, except for me, where I definitely had a couple of options that I thought were superior, and was definitely pushing. Thank you for your kindness, but let's be honest.
One of them has two dots.
One of them has two dots.
Well, the mic's good as a given.
Yeah. All right, Claire?
Well, and I appreciate what Chris said, and I think for the most part, he is correct. I mean, I would say I was biased against some of the ideas, but I think how they're presented here does not reflect any individual counselor's bias or a citizen member of the committee. And I guess, Alan, you know, the last page in the part of the packet, page 13 of our agenda, you know, takes you through the criteria that we used, that then informs the different parts of the spreadsheet. And I think with, I mean, it can seem dense, but it actually isn't very. I think it's laid out in a pretty straightforward, clear way. I mean, there might still be some questions that you come across that you don't understand how one thing plays against another or something. But I think it really lays out the criteria, and as Mike is saying, you know, you can see something that might be easy for us to do, but not get us to our goal, or difficult for us to do, but would get us closer to our goal. So it can give you that kind of mix and match of the different options. So, you know, just, I know you're a good study, so just give yourself a little time.
Extra time.
I think it's, I mean, I feel it's approachable.
All right. I'll let Scott speak, and then Greg.
I just wanted to say one, I appreciate all the thanks, but the staff did most of the work, so they deserve most of it. I would say, I felt like the result was very balanced, and I think especially after hearing the polling, I think the answer is there to have success. So I would just encourage you to find an answer. I guess we're handing that back to you guys. But I do honestly believe the answer is there, and I think there's success to be had, so.
Okay, great. Thank you. Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. Again, ditto on the thanks for everybody's participation and hard work on this. I think we did, we did do a little coloring outside the lines in terms of having some conversations about what a special district possibly would mean in terms of meeting some of the problems and issues that are raised through public safety and park maintenance. I think that there was enough analysis given to me to kind of convince me that maybe that's not the way that we should go, that we need to kind of stay on course for what we are doing right now, and to, you know, more specifically focus on what the issues are, what our needs are in terms of maintenance and public safety, and then trying to go through the process of clarifying what our options are for funding, you know, these gaps that we currently have, and trying to solve some of these issues in a more proactive way. So I really appreciate the way that we were kind of allowed to go outside the lines, explore some of this, and then bring us back into a focus point that I think most of us, I'm not speaking for everybody else on the committee, but I think most of us came into some agreement on.
Thank you.
Be the test.
Any, any other comments? Alan?
Well, you didn't come up with a one that had green all the way across. Some, sure, I know. That would have been, that would have been nice, but there isn't one.
Do the homework, come back, that's all.
I did read it. The other question I had was about, besides why there are two dots on a couple of these things, but this table, which is the dollars associated with some of the solutions, where did that come from, and how was that developed? Doesn't really say.
Oh, the needs?
Yes.
Yeah. That was generated from staff working on these issues, and where our gaps are throughout the system, whether it's natural areas, safety. We work closely with EPD. So just basically from our experience in terms of our needs for operation and maintenance.
So the committee came up with these potential solutions, and you guys went and searched?
No, staff, staff came up with these solutions, and the committee reviewed them and did kind of a deep dive on what constitutes some of these items.
Oh, and you guys put the cost?
Right.
Annual costs?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, Claire, maybe the criteria, yeah, that goes across top, and then the, and the options go down the y-axis. So you guys went through each one of these and said, does it apply, does it not, and just kind of filled in the, that's the process you went through?
No, staff did that process, and we confirmed or altered it.
I was going to confirm that I made a good decision not being on the committee.
It was much harder than that, really.
Seems like you guys had a cakewalk here.
Pie, pie walk.
Pie, always pie.
Okay, any other, yes, oh, Claire, yes.
Yet again, no pie.
So, yes, there's some in the...
You were late. We're having meetings.
So I was on, referring to this list that Counselors Lenka asked you about, was it also not polled from the Parks and Rec surveying that you did, this grid? Yeah. To some extent.
Well, yes, in that we know that these are the needs that are the priorities that people have identified. And so in trying to meet those maintenance needs and security needs, these were the funding solutions and the, and the dollars that, that match up.
Does that make sense, Alan?
Yeah.
Yeah, it didn't come out of thin air.
Exactly.
It did not come out of thin air.
And it wasn't just a to-do list that Parks and Rec came up with. And so, so then...
Sessions of eating pie.
I'm sorry.
As a matter of fact, I was to get to the pie.
What's that? Okay, okay.
It's getting out of control over.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I know we had pies, I'm done.
Okay, any, any other last comments on this work? So then our next step is just...
Yeah, well, we'll take, this has been a great conversation for us. We'll take all of this information, all the past couple of years of information, and come back after the first of the year with options and recommendations for your consideration for moving forward. So.
So this chart that we are doing our homework to study, we'll have it, we'll weigh in on that in January, or is there some thought that staff needs, wants to hear from us before then, as we've reviewed that chart, or?
I guess what I would say is, as you've reviewed the chart individually, and eventually can be collectively, send us questions, if you have comments, if you have thoughts around that. All that's extremely helpful for us. And then, of course, when we come back, you can choose to sort of have whatever conversation you want, however many conversations you want to have about any of that information.
Great. And since half of the council participated in this committee, maybe you all can be a resource to the other half that didn't, in terms of walking through the charts. So maybe we need a buddy system. I don't know, but an informal buddy system. Okay? Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation and your hard work, and we are adjourned.